I'm saying if somebody's really swinging at it. I'm definitely invested in this community. It feels like home. Oh my gosh, this is amazing. I love it. All right, dude.
What's in there?
We brought gifts.
Oh!
Right?
Finally.
Finally, right? I'm Zach Taylor, captain of San Bernardino County Fire Department here in Yucca Valley, and I'm proud to serve you. Today, we are at the newly completed Birch Creek Bridge in Oakland. This project demonstrates the county commitment to disaster repair-ness and disaster response. When Tropical Storm Hillary came through, it completely inundated this creek and destroyed the bridge.
The prior bridge crossing was a smaller 12x6 box culvert, which was heavily damaged by large boulders that came down the burn scar area. Our engineering department put together a quick project to replace the destroyed structure with two 10x10 precast boxes.
I'm extremely proud of our crews and our engineering teams for finding an innovative solution to replacing and repairing this bridge.
These two precast boxes tremendously improve the ability of water and debris to flow underneath the roadway. The project started in mid-September, and we're standing here now on the brand-new bridge, which has been open prior to Thanksgiving.
So often, county projects get held up during design or because of environmental concerns or material lead time, and this project, we were able to complete it in record time.
We have been cleaning channels and installing mitigation measures like K-Rail in preparation for the upcoming winter season. We have cameras in place to monitor the area remotely, and I pre-precision barricades and equipment to close down roads quickly and begin the cleanup process as soon as the storm is over.
With the reopening of this road, visitors and residents now have full access to their homes and local businesses.
Do you own a property in San Bernardino County? You may be owed a property tax refund. To find out if you have a refund, please visit the ATC website at sbcountyatc.gov. On the left side of the website, click "Unclaimed Tax Refund Search." You can search for an unclaimed property tax refund by parcel number or street address. For example, if your address is 123 Palm Street, only enter 123 Palm in the search bar. There is no need to enter street, avenue, lane, or any other portion of your address. If you have an unclaimed refund, the bill number, parcel number, site, address, refund amount, and a link to the form will appear on screen. If you don't have a refund, you'll be notified of that as well. To request a claim form, click "Form" on the left-hand side of the screen, and the refund information will show on the next screen. If the mailing address is correct, click "Yes" and enter your name, email address, and phone number. If the mailing address is not correct, click "No" and complete the form, including where you want the form to be mailed. Your request will be processed in the order it was received, and the appropriate claim form will be mailed to the address provided. If you have any questions, please call 909-382-3090.
Fentanyl is a synthetic opioid being made in somebody's garage or their home, not controlled. It's 50 times more powerful than heroin and 100 times more powerful than morphine.
Stop the Void is a California nonprofit corporation dedicated to educating and raising awareness in our communities about the scourge of fentanyl. We started this organization because I lost my own son, Daniel Puerta, who was only 16 and 1/2 years old when he passed away due to fentanyl poisoning. Due to the stigma of addiction and overdose, most parents feel that this could never happen to them, and I'm truly sorry, but it can.
San Bernardino County started with the "Fentanyl Doesn't Care, But We Do" campaign. Fentanyl doesn't care if you're a mother, a father, a son, a daughter, a coworker, a friend. It just doesn't care. But we do in the county of San Bernardino, and that's why we created this campaign to bring awareness to the community.
San Bernardino County and Stop the Void have partnered together. Come to San Bernardino County website, Department of Civil Health, look at all the resources that they have, and make sure that you speak to your children. Numbers just came out for 2022, and it's north of 109,800 drug deaths in the United States. Roughly 77% of all of those drug deaths were due to fentanyl. This is why this message and this campaign is so, so important. If you think that it can't happen to you, think twice.
San Bernardino County's Land Use Services has now made it even easier for you to schedule your onsite virtual and self-inspections. It's called Easy Inspect, and it's a new mobile app available on the App Store and Google Play. Built with both contractors and homeowners in mind, Easy Inspect is an easy-to-use tool for viewing all of your eligible inspections right from your phone. You can schedule one or multiple inspections at your fingertips. For any additional help using Easy Inspect, visit easyinspect.sbcity.gov or call 800-637-6655.
As we look at this monument, may we reflect on the memories and lessons of each very precious life, because it is this, our shared story, with all its pain and tragedy, that binds us together as a diverse community of people around our county today and even with those around our world. May this curtain of courage represent to you that we choose to join you in honoring the lives of your loved ones, our loved ones, and will never forget them.
December 2, 2015 was an unimaginable day for all of us. 14 people we loved were taken away from us on that day. Our employees were spiritually and physically wounded. It changed us all forever. Following the attack, the Board of Supervisors formed a memorial committee made up of family members, survivors, first responders, and county staff, so we could build something that would stand forever as a testament to our commitment never to forget.
The Curtain of Courage is a place for us, one of mourning, but also we want it to be a celebration of life, akin to a small set of chapels, each signifying an individual loss, but creating a place that marks this day and time.
And today, we're here to honor, to honor the memories of those that succumbed during that day, but also to honor those that are with us today and their families that move forward. To be able to see this Curtain of Courage gives us all, all in San Bernardino County, the state and the nation, the courage to move forward.
In 2018, almost three years after the attack, the San Bernardino County December 2 Legacy Report was published. It was intended to be a publicly available resource for communities and organizations that must respond and recover from similar situations. Already, that report is helping other families and other communities learn from your experience.
The way you sort your trash may be changing. Did you know organic waste that ends up in California's landfills makes up 20% of the state's methane gas emissions? Organic waste includes items such as food waste, like leftovers, bones, shells, peels, and pits; food-soiled paper products, such as paper towels, napkins, and pizza boxes; and yard waste, such as grass clippings, leaves, and twigs. That's why jurisdictions throughout California, including the unincorporated areas of San Bernardino County, are now required to implement Senate Bill 1383, the new statewide plan to reduce methane gas emissions. If you live or work in an unincorporated area of San Bernardino County, you may be required to subscribe to Waste, Recycling, and Organic Recycling Services in 2023. The county is dedicated to keeping residents and businesses of the unincorporated areas informed about this new state law and how it affects our communities before any changes take place.
Code Enforcement's mission is to ensure compliance with county codes and state laws, to create safe, attractive communities that improve the quality of life of residents.
County Code Enforcement has several special programs: illegal dumping, community cleanup, graffiti abatement, fire hazard abatement, off-highway vehicle enforcement, cannabis enforcement, and of course, our traditional code enforcement program.
Code Enforcement benefits residents through our goal of leaving people better than we found them, by leaving them safer, because we have addressed unpermitted construction that could affect the occupants, or by improving blighted conditions that affect not only the occupants, but the community.
My role in Code Enforcement is to ensure that residents of San Bernardino County are following the rules and the ordinances, talking with the public more one-on-one, helping them learn the ordinances, but also talking to them as though we're neighbors, because we need to make sure that San Bernardino County is a good place to live, a good place to work, and be a beautiful place for the residents.
Our Code Enforcement team continues to grow. We're working on some initiatives that are going to expand services and create new programs that will help our county residents.
I'm very pleased with them, always. I've dealt with them for a good 30 years now. There's reasons for the Code Enforcement, and we want our city safe. And you can see, when you don't have the codes, what you get.
I became homeless back in 2008. I lost my sister, then I lost my mom. I went under depression. I was really sick. I couldn't walk.
Tara, we met in late 2019. She was living in front of businesses along the street. We gave her some information and linked her with a host team and Inroads for temporary transitional housing motel assistance.
So I think it's important collaborating with all the departments involved, because sometimes there's a situation where we'll have to gather together and just think outside the box how we could help that person out.
InRoad stands for Innovative Remote On-Site Assistance Delivery Service. From the time that I just recently had met her on the streets to today, she's so much happier, healthier, and is working towards getting her own apartment now.
We go to where the client is and take in the resources directly to them, and it helps build that bridge for success.
I don't want to be homeless anymore, and I thank the county staff and team that helped me through this. Thank you, guys, and God bless you.
A R M C just received Level 1 Trauma Center verification by the American College of Surgeons.
That means that all of these services at the hospital are able to work together in a timely fashion to take a patient from the doorway to the definitive care place. We were Level 2 prior to this. By achieving Level 1 status, we've become a center that doesn't have to transfer any patients out to provide lifesaving care.
It is well-known as the county hospital that serves the Inland Empire region with high-quality medical care, but also a great place to train future physicians and future nurses.
We developed a program, actually just a partnership with our local hospitals, to go out and teach them about trauma. It's a phone call, and then we'll set a classroom for their physicians and ER nurses, and we're more than happy to go and provide this education, because our goal is to provide optimal care for all of our patients, not only in our hospital, but in the outside hospitals as well.
So I think having education in addition to being able to deliver high-quality care, that's what I think makes this hospital a very special place.
San Bernardino County has always been the biggest, and once again, we're the best. Under the Board of Supervisors' visionary leadership, we earned an incredible 160 achievement awards from the National Association of Counties in 2023, winning more than any other county for the second year in a row. There are more than 3,000 counties in the United States, and San Bernardino County continues to stand above them all in terms of accolades for innovation, efficiency, and public service. This year, we were honored for streamlining staff training for our Homeless Point-in-Time Count, hosting 32 animal adoption events leading to more than 1,600 pet adoptions, making building inspections easier, keeping residents well-informed and safe following the El Dorado flood, teaching children the importance of good oral health, providing reentry support to vulnerable clients following incarceration, enabling local job seekers to succeed in their careers, increasing access to healthy foods for county residents, unveiling our Curtain of Courage memorial. And this is just a sample of the 160 national awards that San Bernardino County earned for the services we provide to our residents and visitors. Thank you to our county employees for making this recognition possible.
Hi, my name is Andrew. I am an enrichment specialist here at San Bernardino County, specifically at the War Animal Shelter. For the whole day, I get to spend time and walk them, feed them, and play with them, and just improve their quality of life. I do enjoy being around animals. I grew up with them. I have had dogs my whole life and cats as well. First thing I do, I normally just clean the play yard or the catering room for the cats and dogs, and then I'll check my list to see what dogs are available to do enrichment. From there, I'm just taking one by one throughout the 10 hours that I work here, and I just spend time with them, feed them, play with them, walk them. But since right now it's summer, it's very hot, so we just play in the play yard, and we have the pool out there. What I like is that I meet new pets every day. I bond with them, make them adoptable, find them a new home, especially when it comes to aggressive or shy dogs. They typically change when we provide these enrichments for them. Once they do get adopted, that's the best feeling. When you make a difference, such as changing their personality, you know they're going to be adopted one day just because they're a happy animal. What makes me happy being working with this staff is that our main goal is to get these animals adopted. If you just love being around animals, this is the perfect job for you as well.
Good morning. I would like to call this meeting to order. I would like to also acknowledge our High Desert and Joshua Tree conferencing sites, and thank you all for joining us. Today, our Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation will be led by the Fourth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and we're happy to have Pastor Ethel Rucker, who was ordained into her current position as Echo Pastor of the Christian Development Center in Montclair. In 2014, she pastors alongside her husband, Senior Pastor Donald Rucker. Together, they founded the Christian Development Center in 2000. She spearheads the Women Ministry Convend Daughters of Destiny. Pastor Rucker works direct with the City of Montclair's Homeless Initiative as a case manager and has directly assisted over 100 homeless families in obtaining permanent housing. Pastor Rucker has been married to her husband for 40 years, has three adult children, and 10 grandchildren. In her spare time, she loves to read, take walks, write, and socialize. Pastor, thank you so much for joining us today. Please lead us in prayer and pledge.
Good morning, and thank you so much for having me. So let us pray. Father, we thank you for this Board of Supervisors, and we ask that you would continue to grant them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. Your word declares, if any man lacks wisdom, let him ask. So this morning, we're asking for your wisdom to govern the affairs of this great county. Father, give this board the strategies, the insight, and foresight so they can continue to govern well. You for the servant leaders who have been tasked with the assignment to lead by example. Lead with compassion, kindness, integrity, mercy, justice, and grace for the well-being of the people, their citizens. We recognize that all authority has been ordained by you, so we pray that the authority that has been entrusted into their care, they will use for the benefit of the people in this county. Father, we would be remiss, forgive me, if we didn't pray for their families and loved ones. Grant them health, wealth, and prosperity. Keep them safe. Continue to make your favor and grace shine upon their families and give them peace. You said, "When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice." And you also declared that where there is unity, you have commanded the blessing. Thank you for united Board of Supervisors. Therefore, we receive your blessing upon them. It's a privilege and an honor to serve on this board, so we are appreciative and very thankful for their willingness to serve in Jesus's name. Amen. Place your right hand over your heart. As we start our pledge of allegiance and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to our Memorial Edgermans. We're going to start with Supervisor Hagman. Supervisor Baca.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I do have one. His name is Aaron Milonarsky, 42. For those of you, I think most of us all know his father, David Milonarsky, who's very active with the county, does business with the county, very active here in the San Bernardino community. And, you know, our heart goes out to David Milonarsky. But, you know, Aaron was a longtime resident for the city of San Bernardino, so he attended local schools. He attended Cal State San Bernardino and Cal Baptist in Riverside. And Aaron worked for TransTech on many projects throughout the city, Island Empire, as one of the project managers in renovations at the Santa Fe Depot. And Aaron will be truly missed, so he was raised in San Bernardino, lived a little bit in the mountain community and resided here before he passed. So heart goes out to the Milonarsky family.
Supervisor Armandares. All right, we do not have any special presentations this morning, so we will move on to reports from County Council. Tom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board of Supervisors voted four to zero with Supervisor slash Colonel Cook absent to appoint Andrew Goldfrack, Hospital Director of the Arrowhead Regional Medical Center, effective June 1, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. And our reports from CEO Luther.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Nothing to report this morning.
All right, that brings us to our individual board member comments. Supervisor Hagman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of updates to some of the committees who I represent the county on. First of all, Ontario International Airport Authority, I just wanted to let you know that OIA presented a check for $32,000 to the local USO there on Ontario Airport, and they're improving their facilities for all the service members who come and go from the airport to have a place to go, relax in between their flights. On IHP, we wanted to acknowledge National Nurses Week, and May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Crisis Response Services are available 24/7. And there's an 800 number if you want to write it down, 800-398-0018. On SCAG, I want to thank all who attended General Assembly we had last week, and I'm looking forward to serving as the president this coming year. And then we honored, in our district, we honored to welcome Chinese Council Gao to visit the county last week. We had our fourth Annual District Job Fair and expansion. It's tomorrow at May 8 from 10:00 to 2:00 at Ontario Airport. And coming up on May 16th, 17th is the County City Conference, and looking forward to engaging with our regional partners there as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Baca.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Quite a bit of activity. You know, I serve on the Omni-Trans Committee along with my colleagues, and one of the great things that we were able to do with Omni-Trans, we were able to expand services for the Bloomington community. One of the things we were able to do is offer Sunday services, which was never offered before, so I think it's a good victory for the county, and more importantly, a good victory for the residents of the Bloomington community. I had an opportunity to attend and participate in the Take Your Child to Work Day here with the county, and really was a big, big deal, I think, to our staff and employees. I think they really appreciated the opportunity to spend time with their children and bond, and I learned a lot just by talking to, you know, many of the rank-and-file employees that were there, and they shared some of their experiences with the county. And one of the things I really appreciate about them is their knowledge and expertise in their specific fields. I learned a lot just sitting there going from booth to booth, talking to them. So hats off to the CEO and his team and all the county employees that had an opportunity to enjoy their families and grandchildren that day, so I think it was a great event. The other event I went to was in Ranch Cook Amonga High School. It was a PAYS program that our Sheriff Department has initiated with the US Army, and the great thing that this program does is as many of those discharged from the Army, they're guaranteed an interview with San Bernardino County Sheriff. So this is a great program to really encourage our young high school students. When they enter the military, they can come back, and there's potentially a job waiting for them in the Sheriff's Department. So hats off to the Sheriff's Department and Shannon Dykes for his leadership on that. I attended with two of my colleagues, Supervisor Armandares and Supervisor Cook, the Children's Memorial Flag Day, just to recognize all the victims that have been victims of violent crime or violent issues with their families. I think it was a great event. The other thing is we held a Glen Helen Master Plan Community Meeting at Glen Helen Park, and I just want to thank the designer that really shared some of the vision of how Glen Helen Park could be reimagined. But we also appreciate the residents that came there, and they offered their input. They made some suggestions. They were in support of most of the things that we're trying to do at Glen Helen, and I think it was a great event. The other thing is we have Teacher Appreciation Week. We've honored five of our teachers from our district, from the Fifth District, and really want to wish all our teachers that are with preschool services, wish them a happy teacher appreciation work. We appreciate what they do for all the kids in our family. And just want to highlight, you know, our county resident, Jaden Daniels, was the second pick overall by the Washington Commanders, and I think that's a big deal for our county. What's interesting is he was second pick, just like last year's county pick, CJ Stroud from Ranch Cook Amonga, second pick overall in Rookie of the Year. I think that's great. That's just good to see people from our county doing good things. And the last thing, I'll just highlight some items on the agenda. Item number 24, it's an agreement with the Super Eight Motel in San Bernardino for provision of non-congregate shelter, really trying to address the issue of homelessness. It will provide extra security. It would also deal with some of the challenges we have in our riverbed, the Santa Ana Encampment, to try to get folks there out on the streets. It's about 50 rooms per night. It's just a great opportunity to really make sure we're trying to take a leadership role on homelessness. Item 52, this is a great job by our staff. Want to thank Trevor Leja and his team, Mo, for doing a great job for the Kessler Park Dream Field. This is about a $2.3 million investment in Kessler Park to bring a Dodger Dream Field here in the community. The great thing about this, it's just going to make a lot of improvements to the park, which we've already done. The last item, which is a big hurdle that I think we potentially have overcoming, one of the challenges when we inherited all the fire stations from the San Bernardino City during their abandonment of the Fire Department. What the county did is we need new fire stations, so what we've been able to do, we've been able to negotiate with the San Bernardino City Unified School District to potentially build a fire station on one of their elementary school campuses. This is a big, big deal. This project was dead. We went back with the superintendent, had a good discussion, laid everything out. Want to thank Luther and his team for really making this happen. This is a great thing to get a new fire station. This will be Fire Station 227. The current one on Electric and 40th is just, it's outdated. It needs to go. So this is a good victory for the county and our county Fire Department. And that concludes my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Armandares.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We conducted, in the Second District, we conducted our Commissioner Roundtable. The purpose of the roundtable was for us to engage with our commissioners to make sure they had a true understanding of what our expectations are for them, but it was also an opportunity for us to work with our commissioners and collaborate with them in addressing the issues that face the Second District. I also attended the Mary Mercedes Williams and John Rayner Open House last week. It's one of the, one of three of the houses historically that have been designated a museum for the county. And that house received a new roof, entry monument, parking lot upgrades, fencing, interior paint. But I want to take a moment to thank former Supervisor Janice Rutherford for seeing the potential there for us to plan those funds so that we could actually help bring that to a nice, enjoyable visit when we're out there. Also participated, once again, every month, we actually distribute cake to our seniors at the Senior Center in hopes to just praise them for, you know, what they've done for our communities and encourage them to be lively in the district. We also hosted a community cleanup event where we worked with Public Works and Code Enforcement to clean up primarily the City of Fontana, where they were able to bring up their trash debris and do a free shredding of documents. Also participated in Fontana Days Parade on Saturday. It was great to be out there with the commissioners and City Council of the City of Fontana, so I want to say thank you to them. Also participated in Seat Heat. I was able to be a judge. I judged brisket. We tried like 26 different briskets, and a lot of meat. Got the meat sweats. But it's a chili cook-off and a meat competing contest. I was also able to try ostrich and turtle. So it's a pretty cool event. Glad to support the sheriff in that. And last but not least, item 27, want to give a little shout-out for the Community Culture Center Cooper Museum renovation project. I believe me and Supervisor Kurt Hagman are kind of working that together so that we could get some monies there. I think this project is great. It'll actually be a way for us to preserve the history that's in that area. And that's all.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to thank the Colorado River Station Sheriff's Department out there. I was able to do a Marine Patrol ride-along with the Marine Enforcement Unit out of Parker, and it's super fascinating. When you punch into the GPS where you're going to go meet them, it's in the Arizona side. And we have agreements with La Paz County, and I just learned an entirely new way that our district operates out there along the border states. So thank you to the Sheriff's Department for hosting me out there. And that's it for my comments today. Lena, that brings us to any revisions or additions to today's agenda?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Today, we do not have any changes. Thank you.
Very good. Do we have any board members wishing to disclose a conflict of interest at this time?
Madam Chair, I do. I will have to abstain from item 39. On August 28, 2023, I received a $500 contribution from the San Bernardino County Medical Society Political Action Committee.
Thank you very much. That brings us to our consent calendar. I have one request to speak. Do we have any board members wishing to pull an item for discussion? I'm going to request to pull item number nine. Any board member comments or questions before I take public comment? Garth Pizant, you are our only request to speak at this time if you want to make your way to the podium.
Good morning to the Honorable Board of Supervisors and the public. Item 39, approve amendments to the following contracts to mitigate impacts associated with COVID-19 and reduce related health disparities, extending the term an additional two years for a total contract period of March 15, 2022 through May 31, 2026, to the amount of $7,100,000 as detailed below. To El Sol Neighborhood Education Center, $500,000. And then Empire Health Plan, $3,300,000. Reach Out, $1 million. Roman Catholic Bishop of the DOCs of San Bernardino, $500,000. San Bernardino County Medical Society, $150,000. St. Mary's Medical Center, $1200,000. Young Scholars for Academic Empowerment Doing Business as True Evolution Incorporated, $200,000. Young Visionaries Youth Leadership Academy, $200,000. To Presenter Joshua Dugas, Director. Every disease on earth was man-made. COVID-19 was man-made federally approved. The COVID variant was man-made. The culprits, pharmacists, are witch doctors. Witch doctors create drugs that kill flesh, mankind. God disapproves drugs, including pharmaceuticals. We must wage an all-out war on pharmaceuticals. There was a time when the doctor said, "Eat this and call me in the morning." Our primary care providers are being bribed to prescribe to us deadly drugs called pharmaceuticals. Holistics? Just grow them in your yard or buy your vegetation and proteins from the field at your grocery store. Pharmacists are witch doctors. Do your research. Witch doctors are law-defying.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. That is the last request to speak that I have. I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And the abstention?
So I just want to clarify with Supervisor Baca on the abstention. There are actually eight different contracts in Item Number 39. Is it only your intent to abstain with respect to Recommendation Number Five, the one with San Bernardino County Medical Society, or with all of them?
Is that your recommendation, since that's where I got the?
Yeah, that's the only one you need to abstain from or recuse yourself from is item, Recommendation Number Five on Item 39.
Okay. So I'll go ahead. We're good.
Vote on the other side.
Yep. Okay.
With that, Madam Chair, the consent calendar is approved with Supervisor Baca abstaining from Item Number 39, Recommendation Number Five, Number Nine being deferred, and Supervisor Cook being absent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to our deferred item of Number Nine, which is to approve a contract with CPS Solutions LLC, including non-standard terms to administer inpatient and outpatient pharmacy services totaling $60 million. We have Andrew come on down. And Andrew, this is just a lot of money, and I want to make sure that we have a quick understanding from you while you're here.
Absolutely. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Andrew Gofrak, Chief Operating Officer for Arrowhead Regional Medical Center. So this item is a five-year agreement with CPS Solutions, which stands for Comprehensive Pharmacy Solutions. It's an ongoing contract that we have that will provide both inpatient and outpatient pharmacy services, staffing, regulatory compliance for not only the pharmacies at ARMC and our offsite campuses, as well as provide pharmaceutical services to the detention centers and juvenile halls. The cost structure is primarily derived based off of a per-patient day basis on the inpatient structure, as well as a fixed fee on the outpatient per prescription, with key performance indicators which will align for each of the subsequent years in the contract. We did get to this contract through a request for proposal process back in March of 2023, and it took us the appropriate time of the year to bring this contract forward. So the pricing is in alignment with the RFP and general market.
I think that answers all the questions I have. Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
We do not, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right. Seen none. Any questions of the board? I'll entertain a motion.
Baca, second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With that, Item Number Nine passes unanimously with the supervisors present, with Supervisor Cook absent.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to our discussion calendar, and first up, we have Item Number 62, which is our 2024-2025 financial update being presented by Luther and likely Matthew Erickson.
That is a good guess. Matthew's gonna come join me here and assist with this. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So this is the financial update as we continue through our 24-25 recommended budget process. Kind of just wanted to talk at a high level with the board about some of the big nuts and bolts as it relates to the recommended budget that we'll be presenting to you in the very near future. I think May 17? Remind me the date we're going to deliver the budget book.
Oh, May 21st.
21st. Thank you. I was close. If we could go to the next slide. So we'll touch on our county fiscal strategy. We'll look at our updated five-year forecast. Matthew will actually walk through that. Look at our funding priorities for this year and then talk about next steps. Next slide, please. All right, just at a high level. Our fiscal strategy, I'm very proud of the approach that we've taken. The board has directed, staff has worked to implement, Matthew and his team have worked to assemble and put together over, not just this year in our budget, but over the past few years. And what we've done is through prudent budgeting, we've really worked to try to reduce volatility in our revenue streams as a county. And what that does is it allows our board to continue to make stable community investments back out for those who need services from the county and for our staff, as well as county facilities, projects, all of those things. Because of the approach to budgeting, we've really seen the ability for us to continue, even through what we, Matthew will touch on it a bit, even through some declining revenues, particularly as it relates to sales tax, we're still able to make considerable investment, confidently make considerable investment, back out into our communities, even through a little less certain times ahead. So proud of the way we've approached it and great to see the results that we're seeing. Next slide, please. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Matthew here, and he's going to talk about just kind of what we're seeing over our five-year look ahead. Matthew, jump on in.
Absolutely. Thank you, Luther. Madam Chair, members of the board, Matthew Erickson, Chief Financial Officer for the county. Yeah, so this is a slide that we went over last time with you on March 26. We did a brief fiscal update where we went over some slides and talked about generally where the economy is and where we see the trajectory of the county's finances going. This is a slide we went over, and I thought it really stated well kind of what Luther was just describing on how even in, not recessionary impacts, but when we see slowdowns in different revenue sources that we do have, that our county is positioned very well to kind of continue to grow out of that in a more stable way as opposed to necessarily a more volatile way. And so we talked about this a little bit last time, but you know, for our property taxes, we've seen pretty, pretty good growth over the last 10 years especially. You know, we look at property tax, we look at assessed value growth throughout the county, you know, how our properties are being appraised. And we've seen 6.6% annualized growth over the last 10 years, which is really fantastic. What we are seeing is, you know, with mortgage rates being higher, there's a slight concern that we should see a slowdown in some of those, the growth in those revenue sources. And so what we're doing in our five-year forecast is we're projecting 3% property tax growth for the next five years. So that's annually, every year, 3%. That allows us to be prudent in our budgeting while hopefully being able to see higher levels of growth in that. When we receive higher levels of growth, then we build that into the budget. So on the property tax side, that's one of the things we're seeing. For sales tax, as Luther mentioned, we are seeing some slight declines in some of our sales tax-related resources. So for the first six months of the year, we've seen a 1.2% decline year-over-year in our Prop 172. That's a half-cent sales tax that our public safety departments receive. So we've seen some declines, but the way we've budgeted in those, that revenue source has been relatively conservative. And so what we've been able to do is we're actually able to budget some additional growth in the upcoming year, just because we were not budgeting the full allocations that we had received the prior year. And so it's setting up us very well. I do want to quickly highlight just a little, the right column. You know, we've also, through your direction, been able to set aside quite a bit of funding in a wide array of areas, just for economic uncertainty in the future. So $69 million has been set aside ongoing. What that means is we're not just setting that aside in various reserves that are not really going anywhere, they're actually going towards reserves that are used to pay for one-time type things. So for example, there's been $40 million of that ongoing that's been set aside in what's like building replacement reserves. So as you all know, there's a lot of county buildings and office spaces that we have within the organization that are really in need of replacement. What the board has done is it's set aside that ongoing money to basically be able to be able to pay for those things as times comes up, while at the same time, if we have recessionary items that impact that happen in the economy, those are areas that we can go and potentially cut if we had to without impacting services. And so it's a way that we continue to pay for things that are really important for the organization as a whole, while at the same time, you know, being able to be ready for recessionary impacts if they're needed. So with that, I'm going to jump into some of the cool strategic investments that we're going to do for the upcoming year, some of the neat things we're doing within the five-year forecast as a whole. Some of the strategic investments of areas that are not necessarily going to any individual department yet, but we're kind of setting aside for the needs that we know of, are community concerns funding. This is something that's been allocated by the board. It's a one-time reserve we've had set up for the last, I think, two or three years, and it's supported a lot of the needs in the community for enforcement in different areas that are challenges for the public. And so there's been illegal cannabis issues that the county has had that we really sought to have higher level of enforcement. We have, let me look at my notes here, off-highway vehicle, off-highway vehicle enforcement that we've had. There's been areas in the mountains where there's issues with snow play that we've had to see enforcement of the community. And so these are really, it's pretty broad. Anything that comes up with the community that's a bit of a problem, a bit of an issue, we've had funding that's been set aside. What's cool about this year is we've set aside, or recommending to set aside, $3 million ongoing towards that reserve. And that means now every single year, there will be more that will automatically be reinvested into that fund in the future so that we can continue to use that. More on the departmental side. As I mentioned, you know, we have ongoing funding set aside for replacement of buildings. In addition to that, you know, our existing buildings have a lot of maintenance that are required, a lot of relatively more minor, small capital improvement projects that are needed just to keep buildings going, HVAC-related things, we have roofing repairs that are needed. For years, that's been set aside. We've had $12 million ongoing that's been set aside by the board. This year, you know, not just inflationary costs, but we continue to see a lot of needs in that area. We're recommending an additional $5 million ongoing to be set aside for that purpose as well. Next slide, please. We're also always planning for the future. There's things that we don't always know for sure whether they'll come up, but we like to plan. Some we do know for sure will come up, and so we're planning as well. And so one of our priorities has been our employees. You know, we've had the opportunity over the last several years to be able to have across the boards that have been given when there's been quite a bit of inflation that's going on throughout the economy as well. So what we like to do is always plan for those. So what we have is both known MOUs or contracts with employee unions that we have costs that are built into the five-year forecast, but even what we do after those MOUs are kind of, you know, going to be not terminated but re-upped, we project into the future some similar-type costs that go into the five-year forecast, just so that we're ready in the event that we're able to give raises. In addition to that, one of the core services that the county has is human service programs. One of the, two of the primary areas that we're seeing potential growth in, frankly, the number of kids that are in the system from a foster care and adoption standpoint, we're seeing some growth in those areas, and so we're projecting $54.1 million ongoing in need over the next five years. Those are not definitive numbers. This is just what we're currently projecting at this time. And then lastly, one thing that we wanted to touch on this year is public safety and our recommendation to set aside some ongoing funds for potential public safety needs in the future. And so one of the areas that we've been really paying attention to is what's been happening since the implementation of Proposition 47. That was passed in 2014 by the voters that effectively lowered some of the level of crimes, from felonies to misdemeanors, for several drug-related crimes and other, what was called at the time, lower-level crimes. What we've seen since that time is some increases in some of those crimes. And so we are beginning to see some recommendations for propositions that are coming up on the ballot just in November. I know the state is even looking at some things for some amendments to Prop 47 that may change the way certain things are sentenced, certain crimes are sentenced, and the level of penalty for those crimes. And so one of the things we want to be prepared for is in the event that there's a shift in the way the state of California, you know, enforces crime in the future, we want to make sure we're having some funds that are set aside that are available for different sheriffs, department-related enforcement needs, or detention needs that may come up in the future. This is effectively just a number we're putting out there for right now within our forecast. 9.3 honestly is not like the right number per se, it's just in recognition that there could be some changes in the future tied to those areas. Any questions on that? All right. Next slide. All right, so this gets into the wonderful ins and outs of the five-year forecast. So I wanted to briefly go over just what this slide even means, because I know it can get a little bit confusing. And so, you know, everything you're looking at is in millions, in millions of dollars, so the round numbers are millions. Everything that we're talking about is ongoing funding. You know, ongoing costs are ongoing funding. This is not getting into our one-time availability of resources. What we like to understand, really going into the future, is do we as a county have an ongoing surplus or an ongoing operating deficit? And so that's what we're looking at. I like to say all positive numbers I look at as good, you know, meaning, you know, if it's a positive revenue, that means it's more revenue. If it's a negative number, it either means it's a negative revenue, which you won't see on this, but it will also mean a cost, just simply a cost. And so that's what you're looking at. In addition to that, just to be, you know, kind of clear, everything is incremental, meaning in addition to or a reduction from the prior year. So if you're looking at, for example, line three, property tax, we're projecting $26.2 million more in property tax going into 24-25. The next year's $27 million, that's another $27 million on top of that $26.2 million from the prior year. So what you can look at is on the right column, the five-year kind of shows the summary of the entire five years, how much more revenue and how much more expenses we're looking at. So then to just to get into that a little bit, we are projecting some carryover funds from the prior year this year. And so what we're looking at is $78.2 million ongoing that should be available just to start this year, that is going to help, you know, support a lot of the ongoing expenses. One, that's part of the prudent financial planning that we always have. We already were planning on roughly $47 million ongoing, just in our last year's five-year forecast. We knew that we would have some ongoing funds that would be available to help support our budget for this upcoming year. In addition to that, we did see property taxes coming higher this year. You know, we budgeted 4% in property tax going into this year, and we saw closer to 9% this year. And so that has helped increase the amount of ongoing funds that we have available. On the whole, we're seeing about $60 million more in revenue for the upcoming year. Through the five years, we're projecting $208 million in additional revenue. And then going into our costs, what we like to break out our costs into are effectively, hey, what are our costs to maintain all of our existing services? So what that, you know, that line eight basically covers a lot of the across-the-boards that are already built in for our negotiated employee increases, along with some of the human service costs that we were just talking about. In addition to that, line nine gets into some of the recommendations that Luther will be going over in just a moment with you for the upcoming year. And then line 10, that's when we throw in different things historically that are more future estimated costs. For this year, we do have some built-in costs where we've been setting aside funds for a long time, that line 10 in this year for our High Desert Detention Expansion, that we're recommending to set aside some money that will go towards that this year that Luther may be going over in a second. And so we have that in our five-year forecast, along with some of those future needs that I've already talked about. What I like to bring your attention to is really what I look at overall is line 13. You know, that's where we get into over the five-year, are we seeing an ongoing surplus or a deficit? But we also look at the interim years and kind of what's going on as well. And what we see is, yes, in '28-29, we're projecting a slight operating deficit of $19.6 million. I do want to highlight that slight. It's not really a whole lot, given how we approach the budget. I'm not overly concerned. We try to basically throw in every possible cost that may materialize, and we try to be very careful on the revenue. Doesn't mean all those costs will materialize, but we're just trying to give some broad projections. And I really should highlight the first three years, because that's where we're seeing, okay, we're doing really well for the next three years. We need to pay attention to the budget. It's not that we just can go and necessarily spend wild, but you know, it's an area to pay attention to. Any questions? Yes?
You first, while I add up some numbers.
Yeah. Number five, this year, for example, other revenue of $28.1.
Yeah.
And then it goes off to the 1-point whatever. So what's that, $27 million difference?
No, great question. So, and remember, they're all additionals, and for this year in particular, we have a couple things. Mentioning that, you know, mortgage rates are really high. The Federal Reserve has increased rates. Well, one of the positive outcomes for that, for the county as a whole, is our treasurer runs our county treasury pool. So we have cash in our general fund that's set aside right now. That's just all the cash that we have in the county. We earned interest on that every year, and because rates are really high right now, we're seeing a large increase in the amount of interest that's available. We're being careful in our approach to that, but there is increases associated with that, as well as, you know, there's, we are able to allocate administrative costs of the organization out to the federal and state government. It's a crazy word we call a COWCAP. Some of you have heard of it, the Countywide Cost Allocation Plan. That's a fancy way of saying we have a lot of administrative departments within the organization, like the county administrative office, like the auditor controller, like human resources. When those departments grow over time, there's a lagging way that we can charge out the federal and state, the state resources that we do receive. For so, for example, our human service departments, they're made up of a lot of federal and state resources. We can take the administrative costs that we have within the county and charge those out to the federal and state government. What we're seeing is there were increases a few years back for some of those departments, and now we're able to charge those. There's a lag, the lagging way that we can charge, and so we're seeing a large increase in that area as well. So that's for this upcoming year. It's a reason why we're not projecting in the future that this necessarily will maintain that level of growth into the future, but it is something that we're seeing as a positive for this year.
We're good.
Okay. Great. Awesome. Okay. Next slide. All right, this is, over to Luther.
All right. Thank you, Matthew. I'm not going to touch on every single one of these items here, but these are 12 focus areas where we are prioritizing investment, how we've grouped them. So when Matthew and I sit and talk as we go through our budget planning and work through what departments are requesting, what the board priorities have been set as, what we believe is from a financial security for the county, the right moves, we've grouped them into these 12 buckets, and they make up roughly about $374 million of investment that we'll be recommending as part of the budget back into operations, into services, and into projects. So you'll see some of them highlighted, and I want to just point to a few of them. Infrastructure being one. We're recommending $32.8 million in infrastructure investment. Nearly $18 million of that will be for public works projects. Some of that are for targeted projects, other are for broader uses. As we see inflation occur in, just in the economy, we are definitely experiencing that in public works. And so we're seeing our dollars not quite stretch as far on some of our projects, and some of these projects take years to plan and work through. And so we're looking at setting aside money to assist them with bridging the gap so they can continue to move projects forward and keep those on schedule. We're also looking at a number of bridge replacement projects along National Trails Highway and a few other things. So that's part of what's being recommended in infrastructure. We're looking at land use support. We know that there's a lot of needs in our land use department, whether that's in long-term planning and how we're approaching our Development Code amendments, or looking at different areas within the county, unincorporated areas for development, as well as just staffing needs, you know, supporting the communities. With the recent boom in the economy, we are just seeing a lot more activity in general. general in land use. So we're setting aside $6.5 million and be recommending that to help support land use in, in serving our communities there. Capital replacement, that's a big number, $84.5 million. 32 of that is for county office and operational improvements. Really, there's, there's a, as Matthew alluded to earlier, there's a lot of needs. We have very aged county facilities, and we're looking to try to either replace those, improve them, build new, what, whatever's the appropriate step to take to ensure that we can continue to provide services in a, you know, safe, efficient, and, and effective way for our, our staff and for the community. So significant investment being recommended there. IT expenditures, we're looking at almost $28 million in different innovation projects. 5 million of that being set aside for our human capital management system. We call it EMAX here is the acronym we use, but it is a significant system overhaul. This will set us up for the future to ensure that we have staffing to support. The transition as we ramp up whatever the new system we bring in, in, and ramp down our old EMAX system over the next few years, as well as just help manage the project to transition and implement in the, the new system. Public safety is always a key. $63.8 million of investment in public safety with nearly $41 million towards various, various sheriff's department priorities. A lot of that has to do with investment at the High Desert Detention Center and adding some additional staff there that are needed in order to ensure that, that detention facility operates as, as it needs to. And then financial security, that's something $63 million of investment there is Matthews alluded to, part of our, our biggest, you know, focus is really Matthew is the CFO, me is the CEO, and ensuring this county is, is stable going into the future. That speaks to a nearly $43 million contingency fund that we would be setting aside. And these are for things that may come up throughout the year that are unanticipated so that we have funding available to ensure that we can, you know, weather some, some storms should they present, uh, present themselves. So a, a lot of investment, really focused. I think there is a great balance here of financial stability, improving services, and taking care of our employees. You know, I really applaud Matthew and his team for the work, and really all of our departments for, you know, the work that they've done to make their budgetary requests, complete their department budgets, and then work through with the finance office throughout this process. It's a lot of work. It's daunting. I'm sure very few look forward to the month of March when they have to work to input everything and then, uh, transition over to the finance team to take it from there. But I'm greatly appreciative of all the effort, and I hope that when you receive the, well, next slide, please. When you receive the budget books on May 21st and are able to go into the, the detail of the budget as we work towards the June 11th hearing, that we're able to answer questions that you or your staff may have and provide more input as we work through the process. Matthew, did you want to mention about that link there?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. So, you know, that's a link to our website. Last year, we heard some feedback from the public about not, not necessarily having a calendar that was up there about all the different events that we were having. And so that link will just be available for the public. In the event they would like to see, they can click on the link, and that will show the, the calendar for the upcoming year on where we're at in the budget process.
That ends our presentation here. If there's questions, we'd be happy to answer them. We are sure there will be questions from your offices throughout this process, but either way, we do have the majority of our department's staff here available if there's targeted questions you have.
Sure.
More of a comment than question. I want to thank Matthew and the team for the transparency in this. We had, you know, a couple meetings ago, we had the first initial look at glance. I know your office has been communicated to the CEO, through our boards, is what our priorities are, and this reflects a lot of that, discussions over the last several months. And so looking forward to getting to the details there, but it's a good position to be in, where we're able to do some, uh, some long-term planning. And I think that's a great balance of looking forward to maintaining, because I think I see a lot of entities, local government, school districts, and things like that, who sometimes don't look at that 20, 30-year outlook. And now all of a sudden they have real big capital improvement projects to recover from because, you know, infrastructure wasn't done. So this allows us to do a lot of that. I want to thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. No, I appreciate Matt and his team actually being really good fiscal stewards of the county. I mean, you look at everything that's, that has been done, and you look at our financial stability of the county, and that's important. You know, we don't have any debt. We haven't incurred any debt. I think that's important to point out. But as, you know, as Supervisor Hagman mentioned, you look at the across-the-board investments we've made, the, the county of San Bernardino continues to grow, and we're trying to address some of the issues to address the growth of the county. I appreciate the infrastructure that we continue to invest in homelessness. You know, one of the things I really appreciate, I know this presentation didn't go into detail, but we're addressing issues that probably have been neglected for 20, 30 years and being in good financial shape to try to address those issues are very, very important with our roads, with our buildings, and, and many things. So just hats off to the team, continue the good work, and I'm looking forward to, you know, delivering these items for our county residents, because I think, you know, it's deserved, but it's, but it's just hats off to the great work of our county staff. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thanks for enduring all my questions as we go through this process. I know that you and your team are instantly responsive to that, so I, I appreciate all the work. It is nice to break it up into bite-sized pieces as we go through it, so thank you very much. Supervisor Amunders.
Not to belate, you know, belate the issue. I appreciate everything you guys are doing also, all the questions that we had, being able to get those answers. You guys are doing all fantastic job, every one of you that are in the crowd. We appreciate you and what you guys do, and thank you for making us look good.
And if I, if I could just commend the board. I got questions back from each of your offices on the data that we provided up to this. It, it really helps us be able to put something back together and present it back to the board. Appreciate the engagement, and it will help us continue to refine the budget as we, you know, look to June 11th.
Thank you very much. I do not have any requests to speak on this item, and this is a receive and file, so we will move on to agenda item number 63. Thank you very much, Matthew. This is a public hearing on a proposed increase to property-related services charge for CIP for road improvements, operations, maintenance, and snow removal services in our county service Area 70, Zone R34, which is Big Bear Road, being presented this morning by Noel Castillo, and I will officially open the public hearing. Good morning, Noel.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair, Board members. So yes, we're here to, to take a look at revising the, the service fee for this, for this special district. The property owners were contacted by the department in May of 2021 to make them aware of the decreasing the level of service for the district. So currently, the current revenues are not sufficient to provide the needed required services. There are 26 private parcels that are receiving the direct benefit from the service provided by the district. The district was established in 1994 with a service fee of $100 per parcel, and it has stayed at $100 rate without inflationary factor. So we are looking at updating that fee. Next slide, please. So as mentioned, the district is in poor condition, and so the road itself cannot be just serviced, it needs to be rehabilitated with a reconstruction project. So what this project would do is pulverize the existing asphalt and make it part of the base, and then put on three new inches of asphalt to have a, a better serviceable road. So the, the process would require a loan to be able to do the capital improvement project, and that cost will be about $468.02 for the next 10 years per parcel. And then on top of that, the maintenance and operation costs would be increased to $231.04. And then with that, each year, we would look at doing an inflationary adjustment up to 3%. So the total increase would go from $100 to $699.06 per parcel, starting in fiscal year 24, 25, if approved. But upon repayment of that 10-year loan, the district would only be paying the operation and maintenance costs. Next slide. So as far as public outreach that has been done, the property owners were issued three assessments and service letters, which were mailed on May 1st, 2021, January 13th, 2023, and December 13th of 2023, indicating the actions needed to ensure long-term viability and financial sustainability. There was a town hall meeting, a meeting held on February 23rd, 2023, as well as January 18th, 2024. And the purpose of those meetings was to provide the information as far as needing to update the, the service charge. So the Proposition 218 notice was mailed to property owners on February 29th, 2024. Next slide. And the next steps. If there is no majority protest determined by the public hearing, the next steps are as follows. A mailed ballot election for vote by the property owners on or after June 21st, 2024 will be conducted. The department will return to the board to certify the election results. If the vote passes, service charges will be added to the tax roll and service levels restored to normal. Capital improvement project would then commence. If the votes fail, staff may recommend that the district be dissolved. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. I do not have any requests to speak at this time. Do we have any board members who have questions? I have a motion to approve recommendations number one and two, and a second from Supervisor Baca, and Supervisor Amunders does have a question.
Uh, what's the interest rate for the loan?
The interest rate for the loan? I'm trying to remember if we have a interest rate for that. Bear with me here, I'm looking at my notes.
Is there a rate? Thank you. That's all.
I think we could get back to you with the specifics of it, but it sounds like it's about 3% to 4% we use our treasury pool rate of, so that's to replace what we would earn with the cash in the bank should we ever retain that cash. But we'll get you a specific answer.
All right. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With that, recommendations number one and two are approved, with Supervisor Cook being absent.
All right. Lena, will you please count the number of protests and announce the results?
At this point, we have not received any protests for this project, therefore the board may move forward with approving recommendation number three.
Very good. I will officially close the public hearing. I have a motion from Supervisor Hagman and a second from Supervisor Baca. This is to approve recommendation number three. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Item number 63, recommendation three passes unanimously with those members present.
Very good. With that, we'll move on. Thank you very much, Noel, to agenda item number 64, which is our law enforcement agency's military equipment funding acquisition and use policy for 2024. The report is being presented by Deputy Chief Ernie Perez. Good morning, Ernie. This is also a public hearing, so I will open this while he's making his way. Morning, gentlemen.
Sorry, had to fit in the chair there. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Today's presentation is representing the Sheriff's Department, the District Attorney's Office, and the Probation Department. And I have here with me today Sergeant Ian Goldich to assist me with the presentation. So on January 1st, 2022, Assembly Bill 481 became effective, and it did a few things. It, it added Government Code Section 7070, required law enforcement agencies and their local governing bodies to follow certain procedures before the law enforcement agencies fund, acquire, and utilize military equipment. It also implemented the goal of safeguarding the public's welfare, safety, civil rights, and civil liberties whenever law enforcement agencies use military equipment. So although, keep in mind, although some of these items are not military equipment, and we don't consider them as such, the AB 481 defined all of the types of equipment which fall under the scope of military equipment. Some of these include drones, armored vehicles, various types of, and sizes of trucks, and other, other types of vehicles, command post-type vehicles, and various types and calibers of, of firearms that are specified. It also included any firearms that are designed to launch explosive projectiles, various aircraft, breaching apparatuses, flashbang grenades, tear gas, pepper balls, and any other equipment as determined by the governing body or that agency to require additional On March 26th of 2022, each of our law enforcement agencies created a military use policy, military equipment use policy, and an annual military equipment report. The documents were made public for a period, on our websites, for a period of 30 days prior to the public hearing, similar to what we're having here today. Each agency's report described the types of, in, uh, equipment and the inventory quantities, capabilities, and lifespan of each one of those items. The purposes and authorized uses, fiscal impacts, legal and procedural governing authorized use, the training that's required for the use of that equipment, procedures to ensure the military equipment use is policy compliant, and public in, input procedures to require concerns and questions. At that meeting, the board considered an open session agenda item and approved each of our agency's policies and our reports. Going forward from that point, each agency was required to submit an annual review. The board determined that each of our agencies complied with Government Code Section 7071. Additionally, that the military equipment was necessary because there was no reasonable alternative that could achieve the same objective of officer and civilian safety. Use policies would safeguard the public's welfare, safety, civil rights, and civil liberties, and that it was reasonably cost-effective compared to available alternatives. Prior military equipment use had complied with the military equipment policy. Again, moving forward, each agency must create and post our reports to our websites so that they're available for, for public view. On March 29th and 30th of this year, each of our agencies posted all of our military reports, which included items that were in place or in our possession or purchased between January 1st of 2023 and January, I'm sorry, December 31st of 2023. And today, we're holding a public meeting regarding those items. Pursuant to the Government Code 7071, the board shall annually, at a regular meeting and as an open session agenda item that provides for public comment, evaluate and vote on whether it should renew the previously adopted military equipment use ordinances, and determine whether each type of military equipment identified in the annual military equipment reports comply with Government Code 7050 subdivision D. If the board finds that any military equipment identified does not comply with the Government Code section, then the board shall determine whether it will either disapprove renewal of authorization for that type of military equipment, or require modifications to one of our agency's military equipment use policy that will resolve the lack of compliance. With that, I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Any questions from board members? I do not have any requests to speak at this time, so I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to accept this. I have a motion by Supervisor Baca, a second by Supervisor Hagman. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
With that, item number 64 passes unanimously with those present, and Supervisor Cook absent.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. That brings us to the end of our discussion items. We will now move on to public comment on items that are not on our agenda. And first up, we will have Anonymous with no city provided, followed by Jane Hunt Rubel. I have a speaker signed up under Anonymous.
I'm not accustomed to being called anonymous. Excuse me, I'm James Clayton from Forest Falls. I wanted to suggest something. The last time I was here, I misquoted someone, and it was an economist, and I just wanted to correct what I had said. It was, it's not meant to be a joke, but it was a French economist and statesman, Anne Jacques Turgot. And she was speaking to the Scottish economist David Hume, which you may remember from high school history. And that was the suggestion that the art of taxation is procuring feathers from a live goose with the least amount of hissing. And my father was a, an economist, was a Harvard graduate of graduate school. And I heard yesterday a brief presentation by John Mearsheimer on the current events. John Mearsheimer was the author, along with, now, he was, he's an academic at University of Chicago economist, spent most of his career in public service as a foreign policy expert. And his paper, along with, with Stephen Walt from Harvard, on the policy that's brought us to this, this past that we're in Gaza right now, generated a book on the same subject that was on the New York Times Bestseller List. And I just want to give you the, a very brief, place where if you want to go hear what's going on from their perspective with, with the Gaza situation, you can go to YouTube and you can see it. John Mearsheimer, he spells his name M-E-A-R-S-H-E-I-M-E-R. And it was on Israel blocking United Nations famine aid. And it won't take much of your time, but I'm sure it will fascinate you because it's certainly not the party line that you're hearing about on the news these days. I'm going to read one more thing, and then I'm going to sit down and hopefully I'll be done before my three minutes. I do hope, though, that after this meeting, somebody will approach me and tell me who the parliamentarian is that you use here. It may just be an assistant county attorney, but I would like to talk to the parliamentarian about who runs these meetings. Today in history, Mason. I was reading this to my wife on the way down here, and I asked her if she knew who Chester's.
That's time.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jane Hunt Rubel, who will be followed by Garth Pizant.
Good morning. Oh, it's afternoon now. Good morning, afternoon, board members. First off, I'd like to thank the county, especially Supervisor Baca, for the last meeting. I really enjoyed having those students here. It gave me hope for the future and observance of Government Day because I was getting really depressed about it because I watch C-SPAN a lot, and they were talking about statewide, not only our state, but across the country, people aren't learning about civics classes, you know, our government in the school, especially the high schools. And I was so rejoiced to be here for that because later on, I had lunch with the students and it gave me great hope because they were articulate, and it gives me great hope. And thank you so much for teaching about local and state and federal government, which leads me into, for the past three years, I've been given by Baca the budgets. And I also learned a lot about how state and federal legislative departments are in the county that take care, which makes sense because the county not only gives money locally through our taxes, but they also get state funding and federal things that pertinent to our county. So I was really pleased to have it happen again, you know. I hope this happens next year too. I'm glad to see that the students are watching C-SPAN. I mentioned that, and they said, oh, yeah, we watch it in the classrooms now. And I go, good, you know, finally, because we need an educated populace in order to be good citizens. Another issue I'd like to bring up is pertaining to the roads, the unincorporated areas. And I pulled up this from June of 2019. It was the environment, the San Bernardino Countywide Plan Draft PEIR for the county of San Bernardino. And I was looking at policy TM 5.6, unincorporated truck routes. And we may establish local truck routes in unincorporated areas to efficiently funnel traffic, truck traffic to freeways while minimizing impacts on residents. Well, that's all well and good, but our neighborhood is still, especially on State Street, that bridge there is going to need a new bridge pretty soon because the truck traffic's going over there from the 210. But also in our community, we have a lot more truck drivers living on their property out there, and there's a lot more truck spaces too, like two or three acres where they're moving, I guess, from.
That's time.
Thank you. I have Garth Pizant, who will be followed by Jeflin Giles.
Thank you. Assembly Bill 1482 and Senate Bill 567, Tenant Protection Act. America's dominant race, the Chinese, has forced our judges to enforce laws that move us out of our tenancy. First, they dilapidate our dwellings, then force us out of, out for repair, giving us pennies to leave our homes. Then they repair the home luxuriously for their relatives and tell us if we can pay exorbitant prices to move back, we are allowed to support their profits. To the Chinese, as soon as you enter this country, you are American, no longer Chinese. Criminal case number FSB 18000448, appeals number E074152, the people of the state of California versus Joseph Moulton. State Appeals Attorney Barbara Smith has betrayed her client. She deliberately ignored the declaration of the defendant's wife. The appeals attorney failed and refused to personally investigate the case in the defendant's behalf. Her conduct was a substantial factor in causing unfavorable results, causing injury. Her negligence was a failure to assure the availability of evidence for trial, causing fiduciary breach. The appeals counsel exacted opinions and insinuations, insinuations purposely damaging the trial defense. Appeals counsel was in collusion with the prosecution, exaggerating a complete farce and travesty of justice. The evidence is clear. California State Appeals Attorney Barbara Smith must go. Artificial intelligence, AI, they want you to believe that what you created will overtake you. Artificial intelligence is artificial. Counting the odds, you cannot count the odds of an intelligent human being. He is unpredictable. AI cannot innovate, nor smell, nor feel, nor taste, nor reason, nor worship, nor rely on the creator's creator. AI cannot procreate. Artificial intelligence is worse than artificial flavor. Artificial intelligence cannot rely on God to rescue them, you, or me. The drive for pets and compost. I am going to lobby to have the taxpayers peel my oranges. Let the ecosystem handle stray dogs and cats, not the taxpayers. A teratoga was euthanized. Now I want the taxpayers to make it my pet.
Thank you. The last request to speak that I have is from Jeflin, and I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Good day. My name is Jeflin Giles. I am an honorably discharged, not honorably, but I'm an honorably discharged veteran from the military. And I'm here because I have been removed from my property at 617 East Mesa Drive. So that means I'm being rendered homeless by the sheriff through the county, and this is due to some actions of fraud that are going on. And first and foremost, Board of Supervisors member Jesse Armendaris, you, unlawful detainer court, I'm an heir, that is the wrong court, operated with San Bernardino Public Administrator, who was not an injured party, and never had jurisdiction over my father, Claude Giles, never having any contracts of any kind, submitted a lease to Judge Thornton Harris, Stephanie Thornton Harris. And in that lease, you allege that there was a lease, the property is in trust, it never, ever was a lease, that lease has not been found. You're working with San Bernardino County Public Administrator, San Bernardino County Public Guardian, San Bernardino Attorney Jennifer Daniels. Your name is actually Jesus Manuel Armendaris III. And in doing so, that is what your real estate license is under. You're procuring business through the county to take away property that's coming from seniors. I am a native of San Bernardino, I'm an original Aboriginal American, and I'm not understanding how you want to render a veteran homeless. But you sit here today speaking about ways to help the homeless, but you're putting them out. You also have a contract for $460,000 cash in that real estate transaction. I have your picture here when you came to my home, and you did this under, while you were in the office, that you came into the court, and you presented that. And here's a picture of you. It's on the door showing that you were, signed the contract by the public administrator. This is a problem. But you're sitting here, and we're enacting various items and showing all these things for the public, and this is against the law. You work with Jennifer Daniels, who's also DNA Investments, who is the person, my father's attorney, and she's also the, a limited liability corporation that is purchasing the property. And the problem is, is that you removed me out of the property. Also, Rialto PD came over and removed me out of the property, and they put the sheriff's signs on the door. Currently, if you drive by 617 East Mesa Drive, Rialto, it has the sheriff, not the sheriff, but it has sheriff's stickers on the door, and also have Rialto PD, which is a conflict interest. So San Bernardino is operating in treason. That is treason, is violation of the oath of office and justice. Manuel Armendaris, I sign you on your Facebook page with your shaking.
That's time.
Caller's hand.
Thank you very much. That is the last request to speak that I have at this time. Our meeting is adjourned. Our next regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting will be held here in Chambers, 10:00 AM on May 21st. Thank you very much.